Good evening, Mr. Hale. Can you hear me okay? I'll have to have you unmute your...
Yes, sir.
There we go. We've got you.
Dennis, do you know what's going up over on Limestone at the end of Broadway and Limestone Street? Have you seen that?
That's the... It's a storage facility for ATVs and snowmobiles.
Oh, that one that's... The same one that's built down on Limestone Street, the big blue one? Or is that somebody different?
Might be somebody different.
There's a storage place down on Limestone Street that's a nice big old electric... I don't know, something like that. Partly property in there or...
No, it's somebody different.
Somebody different.
There's two together, two different projects going on, right? There's one on Railroad Street, that's the storage.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there's one further down.
There's one that goes right up and it's... Yeah, that railroad street. Yeah, okay.
It's like a property stock hang-on block.
The one further down?
One right at the intersection.
Okay, that's that one. And there's another one, looks like somebody's doing groundwork, a garage or something further down.
Where the Quoncets are?
Yeah.
A little Quonset section, I think that's KO, isn't it?
I don't know.
Same guy that bought the Terryo building?
Okay, yeah, there's something going on there too.
What are those gonna be, do you know, Doug?
I thought he was gonna move a shop in there.
Oh, okay.
Build a shop, but then he turned around and bought... I think he's the one that bought the Terryo building right at the railroad tracks.
Oh.
I'm not sure, I haven't spoke to him lately.
Seems strange to see something go up there. Yeah. Yeah, you said it was a cut-off, get around the light. Yeah.
I haven't heard anything from Councilor Bulma or Air, so...
I just talked with Tom just about an hour ago.
Okay.
As far as I'm... Nobody's coming.
Tom?
I just talked with Tom, so...
Tom? And he was coming?
Yeah. Told me he may be not coming, but he said he was coming, so...
I haven't talked to Bulma.
He... I haven't talked to her either. I just spoke with him, he didn't answer.
I know sometimes you have to run a kiss to her mother's... There she is, there she is.
Hello?
Hello?
Oh, my God.
You've gone to the market, did you?
Yeah, her... Missed all the appointments.
I thought that was somebody else. I didn't see what I saw.
Except for calls from Sarah and Maya.
Will you?
I'd call her now.
Come here.
She wanted to speak with me all the time. I told you a woman never got a little word back. Call and she wanted to know what my... My picture card was. But yeah, I think I'm gonna pick it back up. This woman called and she said she was from the... She wanted to tattoo those different things. And you're not from that city, but that's a call. Shame.
Oh, Tom.
Miss Fox.
Yes, right. Yeah, the fire group.
Hello?
Good evening.
Well, Ken. If you're ready when you are, Mayor.
Did you guys get a copy of this?
I did, yeah.
Okay.
Make sure we have the microphones turned off, please.
Welcome everybody to the May...
Okay.
Everybody to the Monday, May seventeen, two thousand twenty-one Caribou City Council meeting. Roll call, all councilors are present. Item number two is the invocation and inspirational thought. Tom, please.
I'd like to introduce Tom Hale, who's on Zoom, from the Caribou Church of Caribou Assembly of God, to lead us in our invocation.
Hey, hello folks?
Hey, Tom.
Hi!
Hi, Tom, can you hear us?
Yes.
Asher again.
Perfect.
Let us spread.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Lord, for these men and women who give of their time to serve this community. Will you endow them with wisdom beyond measure, discernment, and insight into what our community needs? Help them, Lord, to work in harmony for the good of the people. Grant them peace in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a council...
I honor...
With the council, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, public forum. Do you have anybody here?
We do.
We do. Gail. Please, how's the microphone working up there? Does that work? Can we get that clarified? Sometimes we have to give a...
Is it working? I don't know.
I have to just talk loud for her. It's going through the sound system.
It seems like you're trying to, I don't talk out anymore. Okay. It is me, ladies and gentlemen of the council. I am Dale Hagerston, one of the co-presidents of the Highlander Division Board of Trustees. I am here representing this board in large groups to actions that are being taken for the Highlander to become at least administratively under the guise of the umbrella. But also to encourage because we are not being included, our voice is not being heard in this process. Three points. The Highlander Board needs to be included in all discussions pertaining to this change. We, the Highlander Board, will discuss the questions and adopt others at a meaningful step. And three, let's set a timely date for the board meeting tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, sorry.
We are the ones who have been running this city department for years and running it successfully. Unfortunately, we have not been included in discussions in the emails nor in the deliberations regarding the proposed changes. We have knowledge, experience, thoughts, recommendations, and ideas yet we have not been used to this nor asked for our experience and knowledge. We would definitely ask the council to give us time to discuss not only the three questions posed in that one email, but also the potential impacts, especially taking into consideration the emails sent to the council in regards to the twenty fifteen ordinance that was recently discovered and sent away only by our council representative, Council Terryo. Our board needs to respect and be a party of gender to speak to and discuss these three questions posed. What "pulp affairs" unquote must be conducted to quote manage and control unquote the division collection and facilities? Who is handling these affairs now and the third one, what is the most important way to handle both affairs if the divisions remain open and standard? We did not own this process with the actively being worked on until recently. It is time for us to be included and involved. The second request would be to schedule a meeting. Right here, right now, please, Mr. Mayor. For both the council and the board who are going to need, so you can hear our voice and... ...recommendation from a department that has been, in our opinion, stifled for several years. Give us a chance to discuss this with you. Let's go down this process to include the department who will be most impacted by these changes. As my co-president emailed me this morning, this is why the board and council need to work out. We don't need one hundred percent attendance of either room, just the majority alone. Also, these are his words, since benefits are flowing, any more actions should break the unquote of the future immunity city manager. Thank you.
Look at the calendar.
How about a week from today?
What's that?
We need to be here on Mondays.
It's not gonna be a week from today. I can't do Mondays.
You can't do Mondays.
And I need to be here for this.
I'm looking at... We have... I'm just looking ahead at what we have a busy schedule. Twenty-six, we have the first, the eighth. Tuesday's work.
How about next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday is what?
We've got a meeting?
No.
I would suggest that we sit down by it. And your board and us, we can all sit here in a council meeting. And that's how other departments do it, and I think this is how we should do it. Something I said to do a couple weeks ago, actually.
And that's fine.
Okay.
Will and the rule of guidelines allow all of you in a cell to be in the same room or just need to be transferred?
We have to go to the direct department.
Yep.
So, if you...
So, when is your next meeting?
I think the best course of action is for us to figure this out and we'll get back to the board.
I'm going to put it on the June fourteenth agenda, but...
I am too.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
I'm good with that.
We'll put it on the June fourteenth agenda.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll find out if we have to make accommodations to go. We have the sound system, we have... We've had to go before. We'll make an arrangement with that, so...
When we have already do a Thursday and we discussed the three questions, we also need to come up with our own questions to give a better understanding of what will happen to the Highlander, the board, under the door of the management director. So, would we like that information sent just before the meeting or in the afternoon?
We'd like to... We'd like to get it out. If you have the information, we'd like to have it prior to that, so we can have it.
Soon as you can.
Soon as you can, because we put it in the agenda, the packet, so we all have it. Because the...
What's the register take? We can speak off of that.
The agenda, the fourteenth will be our meeting. We can... Excuse me, Dennis. We have the agenda packet out by Friday at noon, so...
We would like to have that by Monday, Tuesday.
Monday or Tuesday is when we set the agenda. It's a Tuesday prior. If we haven't before, we can put that as an agenda item.
Okay, good.
And then give us an idea of how many will attend, so we... At that time, because if we have to make arrangements somewhere, that has to be posted, correct?
And also, would you choose to review what our thoughts are to lead this process forward? And looking forward to leading this process?
Absolutely. That works better. We have a lot of other meetings coming up, so...
Yeah.
I'll still pack it for today. I'm glad to be here.
Well, you haven't seen the schedule for next Monday.
Yeah, the meetings.
Wait till you see that one.
For interviews and stuff like that, so...
You know, and even if you wanted to, I think it was discussed once before, that you would recommend it, even if we did some of the highlights, if you didn't... You know, if you wanted to do it in a couple meetings, we could address a couple of the key issues at first, you know, the bullet points. And then we can put some more stuff at a future date, maybe the twenty-eighth.
Thank you for suggesting, well, we have come up with a agenda of items we would like to secure it up. And then this popped up, and it's like, oh, okay, we could roll that off the table. So, we can talk about this because this is most important to us all.
Yeah. Fair enough.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, anyone else hanging up? Public forum, and we have nothing else. Yeah, those are gonna go under... The one goes under nine A, that's the DOT one, and seven B is this one. So, we'll open those. Okay, May third, two thousand twenty-one, regular council meeting. Everybody has reviewed the minutes. Mayor's omission. Entertain a motion.
Move to accept. Second?
Move to seconded, discussion. Air. Bulma.
Aye.
Go on.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Willie. Motion carries. Five B, May thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one, special personnel meeting.
Move to accept.
Second.
Move to seconded, discussion. Air. Bulma. Go on.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Terryo.
Aye.
Willie.
Aye.
Aye. Are we a third through yet? Bit openings, awards, and appointments. We have the approval of Deputy Clerk Appointment Sheri Garman. And that is on each ten.
Mayor and Council, I'm going to defer to our city clerk for a discussion on this and the next item.
Okay, so Sheri has worked here for about a year and a half. She has been my absolute right-hand person since Jane retired. If I print something, she knows to get it off the printer and file it. Like, she is the go-to person in my office for me. She's wonderful at what she does, and I'd like to appoint her as the Deputy City Clerk, so that she can continue being my right-hand person and get the recognition she deserves.
Second?
Seconded, Sheri Garman, Deputy City Clerk, committee discussion. Air. Bulma.
Aye.
Go on.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Willie.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We're right here. We'll go to six B, which is the appointment of election wardens for June eighth, two thousand twenty-one election. Amen?
Okay, so we have an RSE validation election coming up June eighth. And in order to start handing out ballots, once I've had them, we do have everything lined up in place. I would like to be the one running the election as it's typical in Caribou, it's gonna start to do that. I have Sheri looking... Appointed as Deputy Clerk, so that we can run this election together. We also need to set the opening time for eight AM.
Counselors in your packet, the staff manual refers to a third person as a deputy election warden. At this time, we would like to remove that request. So, it would only be Danielle as the election warden and Sheri Garman as the deputy election warden.
Which is counsel.
Second?
Move to seconded, discussion. Air. Bulma.
Aye.
Go on.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Terryo.
Aye.
Oh, you've got something to put on here?
Yeah, I brought to my conference today Gary Markey's from the Parks and Recreation Department. He was recently awarded the Governor's Conference in tourism leadership award for twenty twenty. Whether it was either the Caribou Parks and Recreation Department Facebook page or the city Facebook page, and you can see Gary semi-smiling. But, well deserved, Gary was a lot, was revealing aspects of the city, some that really aren't with him as a role, but that's... I'd like to give that, like, Gary Markey's on that award, it's quite an honor.
Yes, congratulations.
Congratulations, Gary. Okay, one more thing under here. I'm gonna... Open the appointments, there was some discussion recently about an ambulance committee, and there's some emails going back and forth on that. And having some outside citizens on that committee, but to keep that in line with the other committees we have, I will appoint three people from council internally on that committee. The duties have been laid out. This most likely as an email will be work that'll in the upcoming budget and with the... Probably most likely with the new city manager. So, that'll be Councilor Goon, Councilor Air, Councilor Morale, with Councilor Morale as the chair. Public hearings and possible action items. Two thousand twenty-one CDBG application for Gary's Yamaha store at three twenty-three Sweden Street for one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Dennis and everybody's had a chance to review this in the packet.
So, the state opens up a competitive process by which communities can submit applications for CDBG funding, Community Development Block grant funding. These are federal dollars administered by the state. And there's different pots of CDBG money that we can apply for. This particular one is the Economic Development Pot of money. And the state limits us to only being able to submit one application per year for this particular pot. And Gary's Yamaha, they are opening up a new location close to the high school. And they've submitted, or they would like to submit a final application to the state in order to receive a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to help with some of the payroll expenses of opening up this new location. Gary's would be required to match that hundred and twenty thousand dollars with sixty thousand of their own dollars for the process. And the state requires that the city council approve submitting this application. And so, the public hearing that is tonight is to accept any public comment on the proposal. And ultimately, for the council to decide whether or not to submit this application to the state for their final review.
Okay, so I want a public hearing at six twenty PM regarding the two thousand twenty-one CDBG application for Gary's Yamaha store at three twenty-three Sweden Street for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Here we go. Got it all stated, so...
I just was gonna congratulate him and tell him thank you from this seat for sure, for staying in Caribou. We need people just like him, and tickle pink that he's... They're doing what they're doing, and they choose Caribou to stay in. So, that's a heartfelt thank you to those folks.
I understand it's gonna be a quite a facility when he's finished with it.
It's gorgeous. I've seen the inside so far for what they've done, and it is nice.
And speaking of, it's gonna be top-notch.
Yeah, I wish them the best.
Absolutely. Anybody else have anything input on this? Was there been a minute yet? Okay, closed public hearing at six twenty-one PM.
I'd like to make a motion that we we accept this application to send off to the state for Gary's Yamaha store at three twenty-three Sweden Street for a hundred and eighty thousand.
Seconded.
Move to seconded, discussion. Air.
Aye.
Bulma.
Aye.
Go on.
Aye.
Morale.
Aye.
Willie.
Aye.
Seven A. Seven B, ordinance number three, two thousand twenty-one series, authorizing lease of Ogren Dump Property. Do I need to open a public hearing for that?
Yes.
Okay, at six twenty-two, open the public hearing. Ordinance number three, two thousand twenty-one series, authorizing lease of Ogren Dump Property. Public hearing go open.
We received one letter...
Oh, yes.
...proportive to this public hearing?
That is seven B right here. I will read that. "To the town of Caribou, I moved to Caribou about a year and a half ago, one and a half years ago. I come from a small town in Mass named Warren. In the last few years, over ten solar farms have been put in this small town of only about fifty-five hundred people. The reason this happened was because Warren had no bylaws to protect their town from anyone coming in and putting in as many solar farms as they wanted. Warren now has new bylaws for solar and wind to protect the town. Lot of research was done by some of the people, and what they found was upsetting. The solar friends..." Solar? Solar fields? Oh, solar fields leach chemicals into the soil that could get into our water. Firemen won't go on burning roofs that have solar panels because of toxic fumes. And in many cases, the towns get stuck cleaning up the fields at the end of the solar panel's life at a cost of seventy to a hundred thousand dollars per acre. I have a friend that did a lot of the research, and she could tell you a lot more. Her name is Linda LeBeuf and would be willing to talk with you. Her number is four one three four three six five zero eight eight. Thank you for your time. I hope you will look into this before Caribou has field after field of solar or wind farms. Joanna Lanterman, three eighty-four Sweden Street, four nine three one three three seven. Is there any other discussion on this item, Doug?
We did have it in there. We've adjusted that for... To make sure there's a bond of some... We did have it in there, we've adjusted that for, to make sure there's a bond of some sort that's going to as long as the citizens are protected for all of that. That should cover any of her concerns or the concerns brought up there.
At this point in time, the agreement stipulates that there would be a $125,000 bond that they have to post with the city for the cleanup of the site. When that's, and that's within the 20-year initial life of of the arrays that are on the property. And so we had, we've looked at the cost estimates that we've received from other communities that have have done the cost estimates of cleaning these up, and that's what that number is based off of.
So...
Can you remind me again how many acres of city property they have? Is that where we're going to lease them?
On the old Ogren dump ground it's the old, basically the landfill that we have out there. And this is this is rough, but you're looking at about seven acres of ground.
You'd call it even?
Yeah.
Of our ground, but at least in some neighboring property owner, correct?
Right.
So that would leave $15,625 per acre. Figuring per acre. Far cry from what these people claim at 70 to 100. Are we sure we're posting a big enough bond?
Again, the study that we found was prepared by an engineering firm working with a community down in Maine, or in southern Maine. Well, as far as their numbers and the research that they have, we'd have to look at it and see what that information is.
And the biggest fear is that this happens, and then all of a sudden, the solar farm craze goes away, and we're stuck with these. Now we've got to clean them because they're leaching chemicals, or something crazy happens. And I just want to be protected, you know? That's... So this is in here, in this lease?
The lease also indicates that they will be responsible for any environmental damage that they bring onto the property, or any environmental contamination that they bring onto the site.
So they're going to have their $125,000 bond on top of any environmental hazards that they create on this property, they have to, they're on the bone core.
Yes.
Now, that's, that probably covers all the bases.
And this is a legal binding document?
Yes.
Because I can see, okay.
Oh, that little...
To go along with what Tom's saying, so let's say they're 15 years down the road and they fold. Are they going to be responsible with taking all their stuff with them and cleaning up the area? I mean, we, you mentioned that they would be cleaning up any leakage and all of that. But will they also take the stuff? You know, the hardware with them? Or are they just planning to dig a hole in the ground and dump it, you know?
Right. This is, this is the risk of, of long-term lease agreements overall, is we don't know for sure if they're going to be solvent in 20, 30 years. We don't know what's going to happen with environmental cleanup in 30 years. We, we try to get the information that we can to have some money there set aside that we believe is reasonable. And that's based on inflated prices over the next 30 years that, you know, at a 3% inflation rate. And it's, it is a risk. We don't know for sure what's going to happen there. But we've tried to write the lease so that if they bring environmental contamination onto the site, they're responsible for it, and they're going to post a bond for the removal of the equipment off of the property.
Any other discussion?
So in 30 years, it's going to cost the city of Caribou $500,000 to get them all off of there and return it to that way it was? And we got 125 to throw into the pot. And taxpayers are on the hook for the rest of it. Correct?
Potentially. Again, that's, we've assumed a 3% inflation on, on the cost. If, if they had to remove it today, we know what the cost would be according to these other engineers' estimates. And we've inflated that 3% for 30 years to say, how much money do we think we're going to need? But if that's, if it's, if you're still uncomfortable as a council with that, then we can go back to the, the firm and say, we, we need more, or, you know?
As long as we get our basis covered, I mean, we're leasing ground that isn't suitable for much else.
Well, if they dig a hole, it's going to turn into a bomb.
Nobody can, nobody can do anything there. This is probably the only development that that land is suitable for. I mean, there's probably some other options, but if we look at it that way, we're utilizing some get some, some remnant of it from some property that's just sitting there.
We just don't want to get on the hook.
Don't want to get on the hook, I mean, so we...
People can't afford it.
No.
We shouldn't be putting them in a position to have to do that.
You mean, the abiding property landowner has already sold them, the land, correct?
That I don't know.
Released it.
Any other questions or concerns? Close the public hearing at 6:30. What are the wishes of counsel?
I would move to authorize the lease of Ogren dump property to synergy.
All right, I'm going to second, I guess the motion fails.
I'll second it.
Oh, you'll second it? Go ahead, Mark. Okay, Mark, okay. We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, air?
No.
Boma?
Aye.
Gone?
Aye.
Morale?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Willie?
Aye.
Aye. Six in favor, one opposed. Motion carries.
When you figured the inflation, how did you, per year?
3% annually.
For every year forward?
Yes.
So we're starting at 125 bond?
125 is what it came out to?
Now, or...
Inflated after the 30 years.
So what are they putting? So in three years, what do we have to work with?
125, great.
They're putting the money aside so that at, at the 20-year mark, they've got the 425.
That's what I'm saying, so we don't have that.
No.
Not at day one.
Thank you.
If, if you want to reconsider the vote, you can do that.
I'm concerned. I'll be honest with you, I'm very concerned with it. I'm not saying or expecting anybody to hightail out of here in three years, but we all are still carrying a black eye from something down along the river. And we don't want to see that happen again.
Did our attorneys look at this lease?
Yes.
Which ones?
Multiple times. Rick saw them.
Right, wow.
I'm just concerned of the overall. We, in 20 years, we'd have $125,000 to go provide, assuming they would, they walked away.
Right.
So I'm assuming those are concrete piers of some sort?
On the city's property, they're sleds. There's not going to be any penetration down into the membrane that we have over the top of the landfill.
But outside of that, or is that, they're all going to be on that?
On the city's property, it will all be sled design. On the adjacent property, the adjacent farmer's property, there will be on...
That's, that's not in our purview.
No.
So that's, I'm just concerned, so that lessens the burden considerably.
They're almost portable.
What's that?
They're almost portable.
Sort of big, and they're tied down.
Okay, what's that?
They're tied down.
Yeah, let me weight it down.
Okay, thank you.
Tractor and a saw, so I'll take yours off.
Item seven C, ordinance number four. Well, actually, I just opened a public hearing at 6:34 for ordinance, uh, ordinance number four, 2021 series regarding tax-acquired property disposal policy. And that is on page 30 to 36 in our packet.
Counselors, in the city charter, it provides that the city council is supposed to dispose of tax-acquired property in accordance with the ordinances that adopts along those purposes. We haven't had an ordinance that we've been acting under. We've been acting under a policy which has been adopted and amended multiple times by resolution. So this ordinance tonight serves to formally adopt by ordinance those policies. It also clarifies the city's anticipated role in not leasing property long-term to tenants of tax-acquired property. But that we'll be sending out notices of eviction in short periods of time after acquiring these. That we will be going in, sending notices of private property clearance needing to be done, that we'll be securing the properties. And that we will be going through the process of, of public bid for properties. But also giving the council the authority to retain properties and work with a nonprofit redevelopment entity so that we might be able to take some of these tax-acquired properties and see them redeveloped or rehabilitated. And if the city council chooses to go through that process, that we would essentially use funds to abate the past taxes that were owed. Turn the properties over to that nonprofit who then rehabs or redevelops the property. And then, once that work is done, the city is going to be able to get back from that entity the funds that we've spent to abate past taxes, but also any taxes that we would have been owed if that property was in a for-profit situation or not held by a nonprofit entity. And so that was one of the changes, one of the most significant changes in the policy was that provision of being able to work with local nonprofit as essentially a land bank for the city. Without having to create the city's own land bank under the city's umbrella, we can now work with outside entities to do some of that work that we wanted to do. So...
On the, back to the first question on that, you're talking about the, so when we tax-acquire property, and that it's, it's occupied, as soon as we tax-acquire it, we're going to begin the eviction process?
We can't immediately start that process. When we tax-acquire property, that's done the middle of November. And the policy has been that we give people until the last day of January to get their property back. If they haven't done that, then that's when we would start that process of, of the evictions and the tax notices.
So that protects us, so even after that timeframe, we don't have somebody living in in a city-owned property for six months out of our liability?
Right.
That's, that's the only question I had. Gone.
What does this do to stop a Merlin I?
The, the policy right now provides that prior to the tax lien foreclosure process taking place, and it, it solidifies it here in ordinance format, that we have to go through a process of each department reviewing every potential property that's going to be tax-acquired. And they're going to look at it from, from the environmental side, from the building code side, the zoning side, the public safety element, similar to what we did this year or last year with those properties, generating a matrix of, of all the issues that we have with every single property. And that work is going to be done before the foreclosure process occurs. And that information also is provided to the city council so that you're able to see all of that information and make the decision on which properties you want to have the foreclosure occur on or waived. It's already been in the policy. We practiced it last year, and now we're codifying it so that it becomes law, not just a, a resolution or a policy to be considered.
But we, we didn't practice the policy because we acquired Merlin I.
In 2019, right?
But that was a policy set by the council even before Merlin I. And the finance director somehow, we got it. Normally he was paying attention. And now it's a hundred-some-odd thousand dollar burden and beyond. Not only City Caribou, but the Caribou Utilities District. They owed them a fair amount of money, they owed us a fair amount of money. And the ball was dropped, and now we've got this huge building that last time we looked, on last meetings, meeting, meeting before, the bid list was $10,000 bucks. I mean, these policies haven't been, been followed. And now we have, we get to have an ordinance, who says this ordinance is going to be followed? And what's going to happen when it doesn't? What happens when these policies aren't followed? I mean, I'm... It's frustrating, Dennis.
Well, and we, I know we talked about this from the 2019 process, and that's why in 2020 we pulled everything out, dusted it off, and made sure we, we followed what we needed to with it.
But there's no repercussions because of it. Everybody's still hunky-dory, oh, we can acquire stuff, and it's not a big deal because the taxpayer will pay for it. You know? That's a huge burden. And I mean, I, you know, homes, properties are one thing, but that is huge down there. I'm not convinced that even this is going to be followed. Um, we need to be able to put liens on these properties, especially that one. There should have been, put a lien on it. I don't pay my medical bills, guess what? A lien gets put on. It should be the same way for us.
But that's this whole process, a lien was put on it for the taxes that were owed.
No, because...
That's how we got it.
Okay.
The lien was foreclosed.
The lien was foreclosed?
Right.
Like overnight? Because we, we as a council had no knowledge of it. We as a council had no knowledge of that even being tax-acquired.
Yes, we did.
We provided the council a list of all the properties.
It was never in this packet, because if it was in this packet, there would have been at least four counselors, one of them from last year, that would have said something. And it wasn't said, Dennis.
No, I can tell you.
All I can tell you too, Dennis, is that this is a huge burden, and the policies that we put together even in 2019, because I remember saying we need to do something, and it wasn't followed. So how do I know that this ordinance that's been drafted up for chapter 19 is even going to be followed? That's just where I stand. Because that was a huge learning lesson for me down there.
Mr. Mayor?
No, Joe.
What happened was, it was, a tax lien was on it, it was foreclosed on it. But when it was, when the properties were presented to the council, it was an address, okay? 242 Wash, um, Lower Washington, or something like that, I can't remember what it was, but it was an address. It didn't say, that's, that's where the problem was, is that it didn't say what it was. We would have had to physically go, which like I said before, I usually do. We would have had to physically go and see that address, and if we had or one of us or somebody, then we would have known what it was, and we could have waived foreclosure. That's what happened. And we didn't, and so we accepted it as face value, thinking that it might be a, a house or something like that. We, we went ahead and accepted it, and that's how we ended, how we got it. If we hadn't accepted it, we would not have taken it.
All, all I know is that I got a call one day, and I had no prior knowledge of any of this. And trust me, we, we all looked, and all of a sudden, we acquired Merlin I.
Because it was just an address.
I, I don't think it was even on there. I, I don't think it was even on there. I'll go back and look, I've got all the council...
No, it was, it was, it was just an address.
I don't think it was.
Yeah.
We, we brought everything to the council.
Yeah.
And granted, it came in address form in two thousand nineteen.
That's right.
Last year, we brought you addresses with maps for every piece of ground so that you could see what you were considering in, in more detail.
With maps?
In two thousand twenty.
Right, in two thousand twenty. Because of, of that, because of that snafu, that, you know, we didn't look at it. Nobody actually physically drove out to see what that prob, uh, property was.
I'm sorry, Councilor Merle, I cut you off.
I was just gonna say that I, I was sitting in the peanut gallery during the executive session, and I thought you, you come to Jesus and come clean that night, that somehow this snuck by, and Carl's name was brought up that allowed that to be tax-acquired, as I recall.
That's how I recall it, too. Whatever, you know, it is what it is.
You just gotta prevent it. There's gotta be some teeth if we're gonna make these. And by the Jesus, somebody's gonna be held accountable if they don't follow them. If we're gonna just make this for waste of paper, then if, if somebody's not gonna be held accountable for not following, be it the manager or whoever in that line that pulled the trigger on that, then what the heck are we even bothering making up ordinances or any other thing? It's gotta have some teeth. They gotta be accountable.
Public hearing closed at six forty-five regarding tax-acquired property disposal policy.
Move to accept, is that what you, you'll confirm?
Yeah, we're all just waiting. What are the wishes of council?
I think we should just wait a meeting or so and really dive into this and double-check it. That's just my opinion. I mean, I read over it, but I'd like to go over it with another five to go home. It's introduced, it's out in public now, so.
Right. It was, it was introduced, uh, last meeting in April, and so certainly you can take more time to review it if you like.
Would they need to recess the public hearing rather than closing?
No.
So that'll be on a future agenda. On the next agenda. We'll, we'll see, yeah. You put that on the next agenda, remind me, or I'll remind you when I... Uh, public hearing ordinance number, open public hearing at six forty-six for ordinance number five, Charter Amendment Counselor Qualifications. This was pretty simple, wasn't it?
Yeah, we, um, Counselor Terrio and Counselor Willie and I sat down and kinda looked at this and wanted to bring it to the council. Um, just a few clarifications, just so everybody's on the same page. And then bring it to the council so we could all discuss it. We can most certainly, and I've talked to Jody about this. We, we're so busy, the council, with, I mean, all of our boards and trying to find a city manager and everything else that's going on. We at least wanted to bring it to public hearing and then at a later, uh, date be able to, when we have a little bit more time, and maybe with the, you know, when, when Dennis is in sunny Utah, where we just have more time. Um, I don't, I'm not, I don't wanna push this through. I, I want the public to chew on it, I want council to chew on it, and any, any recommendations that the council would have for changing it. And go from there. We were only three, three of sevens, definitely not a majority, so.
I think it was mentioned when we formed the charter committee by Counselor Morale, that there's no need to be in a big rush to get the stuff through for the charter, you know, as far as cleaning it up. So I have no problem with that. Any other discussion on this particular one regarding? So on this, I'm looking at this quick question. So all you've done here is you haven't changed anything really, you've just cleaned up some...
Cleaned up language.
Basically, I'm reading it, it says the number two replaces BA. It's pretty much the same thing, just worded a little differently, right?
Right.
The same with, uh, the same with, uh, honor before the thirty-first each year. Have, that's still the same. You have to have everything paid by the thirty-first, you just changed the wording?
I think the intent of the council committee, if I might, was to try to take out some of the gray area. I think that term was used quite a bit. And so by providing some rewording, the hope was to eliminate some of that gray area.
Because I happen to agree with that pretty strongly, so. That's, that's my opinion.
So, Mayor, if I might, you're, this was noticed for a public hearing tonight, and so you can, you, it needs to be opened at least tonight. You don't necessarily have to close it tonight, but you can recess it so that there can be additional opportunity for public input for the council at future meetings, if you want to do that.
We recess it and it keeps it open?
Yeah.
For anyone, for our discussion or anyone else. I'll recess the hearing.
So you have to open it first, but it looks like Counselor Gahn's got a question.
I opened the hearing already.
Did he?
Yeah.
Yeah, Counselor Gahn, I don't want to...
Well, you did.
Utah.
Yeah, you started talking about sun in Utah.
Sun in Utah.
So, um, I also have questions, and I'm glad we're gonna dig into this at a later date when we have more time. But I'm just kinda curious, as it stands now, somebody running for council and wins in November, but hasn't taken their seat on the council yet, do they have to have their taxes paid by January, December thirty-first?
Yeah.
Under the current charter, is that what you're asking?
Under this, uh, after this is done, does a elected but not sitting counselor have to have his taxes paid by December thirty-first?
This language says each sitting city counselor, so...
He's not a... He or she is not a sitting counselor at that time.
Oh, okay.
Right.
So they could pay their taxes on January first and get seated in January third and be qualified.
Okay, yep.
This language says the sitting city councilors have to have their taxes paid by December thirty. So yes, if somebody's elected, if somebody's elected...
Counselor-elect.
If they're a counselor-elect...
They do not have to have their taxes paid by December thirty-first, only before they take the seat. Okay?
Yes.
That's how I took it.
I think you need to adjust that.
Now, Joan, just, you kinda said yes. Did you say yes to that?
Well, that's, I was gonna, uh, bring up, if we were gonna recess these, to add elected in there, because that was, we had, we didn't do that, but maybe we should add elected in there to clarify it.
So we can do some additions here now?
Yeah.
But one thing that would help me out tremendously is, can we ask a legal opinion on if it even contemplates the realm of discrimination about someone not having their taxes paid on time?
We, we did have an opinion from Bernstein Schur on each of these charter amendments tonight on the agenda, and I can, I'll provide that to you. They basically said there's nothing constitutionally or in accordance with the state of Maine that would be illegal with these charter amendments.
Okay. Just wanted to narrow one question to one lawyer can just have it done in that fashion.
And I think one of the concerns that even the, the legal from Bernstein Schur's was talking about is the concern that somebody, if they're, if they're prevented from running for office or taking their seat because of this kind of a provision, you may get into the constitutionality issues of somebody's right to, to go through that experience.
That's my question then.
Right.
We were bordering that.
That's my question, that I would like to have answered. You just gave my, you just gave a good question, right there.
Okay. So that's one reason why this language is that sitting city councilors have to do this, but that was their concern, that you can't necessarily, they are recommending we don't impose something on the election process itself, and for those candidates that are, are elected prior to being seated or sworn in.
That's the second, you're, you're doing all my questions, warning right here. You're imposing something. That could be asked of a lawyer.
That specific question, what are the, what's the potential legalities or constitutionalities of imposing this provision on the election process?
Correct.
Or prior to being sworn in?
'Cause when the new charter was written out by the charter commission, it was sent to Rick Solomon, and he said, sent a letter back that said there were no constitutional issues on that.
And we've had a diff, another opinion. That said just the opposite, that, that was on the opposite side of that debating point.
But we're talking about the elected official, not a counselor-elect.
Yeah.
A counselor-elect is nobody until they are sworn in, duly sworn into the seat.
Then we just recently found that out, legally, in another...
But I, I would agree with him, that we should ask questions. That's one that, uh, because we were knocking on that door. And it changes, as I understand, it changes the water and the beans for everybody involved when you start... I'm no lawyer, but... Yep.
Any more discussion on this? I'll recess the public hearing at six fifty-five. And at six fifty-six, I will open the public hearing for ordinance number six, Charter Amendment Counselor Meeting attendance. Public hearing's open, that is on page thirty-nine.
I already took one, you take one.
Okay.
I'm just looking at this.
This again was an attempt to try to eliminate some of the gray area within the charter, also recognizing that the, the charter currently requires that the city council have at least one meeting per month. And there was a recognition that the, the requirement that they cannot, or that each counselor cannot fail to attend, that's bad wording, I'm sorry. But if you figure there's twelve meetings that are gonna be held in a year, and somebody fails to attend three consecutive meetings, then they've missed almost seventy-five percent of all the meetings in, or they've missed, sorry, they've missed twenty-five percent of the meetings that they were supposed to attend. And recognizing that current practice has been multiple meetings each month, that failing to attend three consecutive regular meetings provides potentially a counselor to attend two, miss one, attend, or miss two, attend one. And they could potentially miss a lot of meetings in the year but not have attended three, or not have missed three consecutive meetings. And so, part of this makes it so that instead of referring to consecutive meetings, having a percentage of regular meetings that they're supposed to attend, also the clarifying that counselors are required to attend their regular council meetings, the city budget workshops, and meetings of counselor committees. Again, trying to eliminate, you know, what is a committee? Does that include N M D C? Does it include Arista Quay Solutions? And so this charter amendment ties the council's obligation to council and city meetings rather than those outside entity meetings. Uh, that's, so that's part A. Part B is the, is the percentage change rather than the consecutive meeting change. And then the last part, uh, that part C of the ordinance, again referring to potential for forfeiture. If a counselor fails to attend at least eighty percent of all budget workshop meetings and meetings of counselor committees, uh, then they are up for potential forfeiture of office. And then there was the one provision added, community boards or meetings where a counselor acts in a liaison role excluded from this requirement.
Basically where you don't have a voting. A board where you're not, where you don't have a...
Yeah.
Right.
Pretty much what we did, which we kind of established in January. And now we're just getting it, this language into the...
Into the charter.
Into the charter, correct?
Right.
And then the, and then the eighty percent is without being excused, so that's... And then adding the meetings of counselor committees, that was added too. So that basically goes along with this one. You're just clarifying both of them.
Yes.
What is and what isn't. Okay, no, I have no more questions on that. Anybody else have any more questions on this particular ordinance? I'll recess the hearing at six fifty-nine. And let's see, uh, six fifty-nine, I'll enter, I'll open a public hearing for ordinance number seven, two thousand twenty-one series, Charter Amendment, City Public Notice Requirements. Public hearing is open. All right, so forty-one, forty-two.
Yeah, let me try this one on...
Go ahead, buddy.
Mayor and council, this one, see what I, there. This one basically just states that we can use social media sources, um, our public access station, um, instead of the newspaper. We still use the newspaper, but be able to get it out quicker and faster. And, 'cause as of right now, we can only use the newspaper. Correct? So we need to kinda update it to, to our current times and be able to use the social media posts and, uh, go from there, it's just, uh...
Or the, or the city website, right?
City website, social media, yeah.
And I mean, that's social media, is what you're saying. So we can use that as of now? I didn't read this real closely, so basically just saying we can only use the newspaper now.
Yeah. We, we can use the newspaper, the city website, and the public access station, but we, we have to use the newspaper now. This provides an opportunity for us to, to notify the newspaper, but not necessarily do we have to publish it in the newspaper. As we look at the driving costs of, of publication and also newspaper circulation, the thought was there's maybe more efficient ways to get the word out.
I really don't see a reason we couldn't take that sign at the rec center and commandeer that for a period of time to have, you know, a public notice put up there. I mean, everybody and their brother seems to drive by that at some point in time. You know, it would be another source.
We're not, actually, we're not trying to, what I see this is we're not trying to, if we don't use the newspaper every time, we're not trying to, we're trying to find better ways to get a hold of people quicker. So we may get out to more people than just the newspaper.
Yeah.
But the other piece with that is, uh, you're on a time limitation with the newspaper.
Yeah.
So if we're in the middle of the week and we say, well, we like it for Monday, we can't possibly get it in. But we could get it on all the other places and still have plenty of time, so...
We could still publish.
It kinda cuts down on that overlap.
So is the idea still to publish the paper if possible?
If possible.
I mean, if possible, we don't have to.
We can notify them and... With, with, with all these social media free advertising, I mean, jeez, our website, Channel thirteen, well, it's free, but, I mean, you know, social media is and...
I guess the one...
Just send it, you know?
As long as you try to use the newspaper as much you can, 'cause you're gonna get the argument from some people saying, I don't, I don't have social media. I live on Las Wasker Road, and my only thing I get is the mail delivery.
They probably don't buy the newspaper either.
So, yeah, they could be the one arguing again.
There are still some public hearings that will have to use the newspaper. Uh, tonight, the C D B G public hearing, for instance, that's a federal program and they require publication the newspaper. But, uh, other than that, we can certainly use the recreation center, Marquee Sign, and, and other sources. Uh, this just allows us to utilize those other sources and not be bound to have to use the newspaper for those publications, as has been indicated. They have a timeframe, and they're only published once a week. As has been indicated, they have a timeframe and they're only published once a week, but they have a timeframe to get notices in there. And that doesn't always jive with being able to expedite processes and also get the information out to the public as much as we can.
So should we put something in there that says basically as required by federal or state law?
Or unless required by.
Unless, unless required by federal or state law.
We, we can add that.
Might as well, that just covers our bases. I mean, if, if a, if a grant requires us to, to do it, then it requires us, that's in there.
It's getting quite costly to the newspaper. Okay, I'll, any more on this, I'll recess the public hearing at seven oh oh three. And that's it, we'll bring these up whenever, I think we've all, you understand, we're all agreeable to what the two changes were, there was only a couple, right? Okay, reports, financials for two thousand twenty-one. Any highlights, Carl with us, or are you gonna run through it for us, or?
We do have Carl available on the Zoom.
If you have any questions, just, you can run through, however you want to handle it. Those are the highlights. Good, bad.
Carl, the time is yours.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and Councilors, looking on page forty-three. At the top, assets as of April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one, was seven point nine million. Cash on hand was three point six million. Halfway down the page, twenty twenty tax receivable, we collected a hundred and thirty thousand, leaving the balance at two hundred and twenty-one thousand. So through the end of April twenty twenty-one, we collected ninety-seven point two percent of the twenty twenty commitment. The next line, twenty twenty-one tax receivable, we collect almost thirty-six thousand towards the twenty twenty-one commitment. Total collected is two hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred. Moving on to the next page, total liabilities, three quarters of the way down the page, five point nine million. Moving over to page forty-seven, our total fund balance, one point nine eight two million. Moving over to page fifty, expenses for the month of April. The third column, current month net, at the bottom, we expect seven hundred and twenty thousand six seventy-seven sixty-four. The percentage, budget, we're at twenty-nine point seven. And we're a third of the way through the year, so we're down about three and a half percent of overall expenses towards budget. Moving over to page fifty-five, revenue. I'll touch base on excise tax first. We collected a hundred and seventy-four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine for the month of April, that's a hundred and forty-one thousand over April of last year. And last year was the first month of the pandemic, that's why there was that big increase. Year-to-date, collecting, we're over last year's amount by two hundred and six thousand. Again, that's because of the pandemic start. This year, year-to-date, we're one percent under budget, which is the next one. So total revenues for the month were at six hundred and twenty thousand eight seventy-six. That's eighteen point two-two percent of our budget. That's all I have to present, unless anyone has questions.
Anybody have any questions for Carl regarding the financials? Thank you, Carl. Need a motion to accept the financials?
Don't move, second?
Second, accept the financials, two thousand twenty-one, discussion, air.
Nope.
Bulma.
Aye.
Go on.
Aye.
Morale?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Willie?
Aye.
Aye. Six in favor, one opposed, motion carries. Manager's report, sixty-nine, seventy.
Mayor and Council, again, just to highlight some of these that are in the report, the first one, the riverfront power plant buildings. We received word from the Maine DEPs that they're gonna move forward with the environmental study of those power plants. They've awarded that to a local business, County Environmental. They should, the timeframe for the contract, it appears it will start within about two weeks. And then they give them about a month to actually do the, the study. So we're, we're gearing up for, for them coming in and looking at the city records, if there's anything that we might have written into the, to the building. The broadband initiative, we met with Spectrum last week and we discussed some expansion options. We sent them a list of four hundred and forty-eight homes that according to their service map are not serviced within their, their system. They are going to turn that information around to us with a bid to build out the entire city. Or basically run it to the furthest extent of each road within the city. And so that would cover those four hundred and forty-eight homes and get the system to our neighboring communities who then would be able to connect on and expand to their, their citizens as well.
Can I just speak to that real quick?
Right, yeah.
For the public, Lou, myself, Mr. Kirkpatrick, and Dennis, we met with Spectrum. And there's a lot of money, the Biden administration, for his economic, or, you know, what's he calling that thing?
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, this infrastructure plan he's boasting. So we're trying to go after that money in order to get internet to the entire city. And in our discussion, we talked about what it would look like if Spectrum did it, and then we also have what, what other people have been working on in having dark fiber put in our city. The only downfall that I see to having Spectrum come in is that on their lines, if they put up their lines, they're the only ones that can do it. They're the only service provider, you're stuck with Spectrum. If we have another, kind of like what Pioneer did in Holton, on these dark fiber lines, they're open. So that a red zone or Pioneer or another company could come in and they can use those lines. So what you do is you create a kind of competitive atmosphere, keep costs down for everybody. And this is hundred up, hundred down. And these cables have the capability of being able to do a gig, gig down. So they're higher speeds. I would request that, Mr. Mayor, that we do put this on the agenda. And we need to strike while the iron's hot on this, so we don't let this fall through with the cracks again. And we need to figure out who's gonna write this grant for us. Because we as a city have to go to the federal government, the way I understand it, to get this money. And then whoever else it is, is gonna pick up the slack, basically, correct? Is that kind of how you understood it?
There are multiple pots of money out there right now. One of them that, the latest estimate that I've seen was almost seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars coming to Caribou over two years, which is not one that we have to apply for. But it's one that we cannot use except for COVID-related projects or infrastructure expansion like this. We can't use it to offset the taxes, but we can use it as one-time funds for a big project like this. There are other funds out there through the USDA or, you know, like you say, other grants that we can go after as well.
We need to figure out who on the city payroll is gonna do this, or we hired it up.
Well, I, I'm just gonna throw that in there, I mean, we, we need to, first of all, we need a list of, of grants. And we probably need to decide which ones we're gonna go for.
Yeah.
We prioritize, you know, so we don't go after everything, like we've done with the police, you know, we had to go after every single grant. If we had the list, we could prioritize and then and if we, and if, and if we have to hire some grant writer for a couple of grants, that's pretty minimal for, we don't do that that often.
I can tell you, the biggest frustration, especially with all this COVID, and I'm probably speaking for a lot of the parents out there, was having to have the kids go in on their computer for school. I mean, with internet, we, we ended up abandoning our house and going to the farm because we had internet there, it was better. Kids absolutely hated it, cause I put them to work after, but, you know, it's, we, we have got to do something with this internet and it lends to this economic development plan, in my mind anyway. Because now you have internet to four corners of City of Caribou, everybody's got internet, they've got fast internet. And you watch, businesses will be able to move out. Just, just at the end of my road, there's a couple businesses, you know? And so I respectfully request we put this on the agenda next time for discussion.
Yep.
There's, there's definitely a lot of information that we still need to gather, obviously. Spectrum's, their initial conversation was that they could have this, the whole city built out in eighteen months if, if the funding was there and the city pulled the trigger on it. But we don't know, you know, all the work that, as you say, that we've got a private investment group right now that's looking at this dark fiber net across the city and we still need to see their numbers and their proposals and if the city itself is going to put money into the game, we need to pull all that together.
No, I think the city can put money into the game through these grants, so.
Definitely, I think it would discuss a little bit on the investment we talked about the other day. About broadband investment committee.
Okay.
Keep that, we'll get that on the agenda.
Okay.
Okay, so that's that one. Under events and marketing, we have, after the last council meeting, we looked at the Sweden, Sweden event. We had before the latest announcement about masks, figured out a way to move it still downtown into the north parking lot. The, the May twenty-fourth deadline that we have now with the state of Maine going to no mask for outside activities. We are planning to move it onto Sweden Street. And Christina is looking for any and all vendors that want to, to come down and be part of that, to get in touch with her as soon as possible. Also, we have a Memorial Day Parade planned. And we'd like to encourage businesses and different organizations to put together floats and be part of that event. There is information on the city website and the, and the Facebook page, but again, feel free to contact Christina and she can talk with you about that event. The kayak race that took place on Saturday, it was well-attended for our first time as a city. And it was a lot of fun, a beautiful day. There was a lot of things going on, on Saturday with regards to the yard sale, and we had ten different schools up at the high school, a track meet, a lot of vehicles in town, and it was fun to see. There's gonna be another county-wide track meet this Friday at the high school, so again, more traffic coming into the area. Chief Gehigan noted for me that there was no issues with the yard sale on Saturday or over the weekend, and so thank you to all the citizens that participated in that and made that a fun event. And maybe next year we'll have the borders open and, and bring some, some international dollars into the city again like we have in the past. It went well. With regards to blight cleanup, we just received some information this afternoon that a couple of the buildings that we have on our dangerous buildings list, they did not complete the thirty-day requirement that we had set out for them. But they have indicated now that they are planning to tear the buildings down themselves rather than try to repair those. And so we're going to be on them now to get us information and timelines that that is actually going to occur. We've already solicited bids to have the buildings torn down by the city if, if they are not able to do it themselves. And so we'll, we'll keep you updated on, on that as that progresses.
Didn't we, didn't, were these the folks that entered into the agreement, that they had a certain period of time to put together a plan and we went through all that dog and pony show and they, that they agree and now they're just.
Now they're indicating that rather than try to fix those homes up, they are gonna tear them down themselves. But we have.
Did we have a clause in there to handle a case like that? In other words, you're gonna tear it down, it is gonna be a ten-month project. You know, there gotta be some timelines, and I'm just not aware, maybe we did, I, I remember.
The letters that went out were not agreements, they were, in a sense, mandates from this council to say you have thirty days to bring back your plan of, of what you're going to do. And if you don't do it, then the city council, with those letters was, we're gonna be moving forward with it. So we are getting bids to have the buildings torn down and we're moving forward. If, if we move forward with it from our side, we will lean the properties, you know, so that we have that, it'll be added to their tax requirements each year.
Those buildings, the demolition, they know that the clock's still ticking. It's not just open-ended, is what I'm trying to say, the clock is still ticking. And if they choose to tear it down, I guess that's their business, but it's not open-ended.
We gave them a total of ninety days in which to act and, because they didn't pull the trigger within the thirty days, that's why we're moving forward ahead. But we're gonna, if they're gonna do it themselves, they can say, we'll still work with you, we want it to be done.
As long as it meets the window and they're not, you know, we get the ones, whoa, we're gonna pay our taxes, it doesn't happen, well, we're gonna fix it, it doesn't happen. They're gonna tear it down, fair enough, but get on it, get it done, say within the window that we all agreed.
Under administrative projects, for the public knowledge, we had eleven applicants that were submitted, the council has, has met and reviewed those. And as you've indicated, Mayor, that there's gonna be some meetings coming up in which the council is going to have some additional review of those and the applicants, and those will be posted at a future date. The roof membrane at the fire station is being completed. The painters should be in the building this, here this week. We anticipate that the total project at the fire station will be done in three weeks. The public safety building committee met. And I think I'll just leave that for Counselor Bulma, who's the chair, to, to discuss under the manager or the council reports. As far as the trailer park closure, we did receive one of the a thousand dollar award from ACAP to help pay off some of the back rent for one of our tenants. And we have other applications that are also being reviewed right now for additional funding to help out with that. And so we've, we've met with a couple of tenants, trying to figure out timeframes. We had somebody share with us that there may be one or two tenants that are going to defend their home and their property, maybe in a little more violent manner, but we'll, we'll have to work with the police and, and when that time comes. That's all I wanted to touch on tonight as far as the manager's report. Unless you have other questions.
Anybody have any questions regarding anything on the manager's report? Thank you, Dennis. It's one of the better parts of the agenda. Okay, new business ordinances resolution discussion with MDOT removal, regarding removal of Otter Brook Bridge. And I believe we have a gentleman via Zoom. Should I read this now before we start? I know this isn't a public hearing, but it pertains to this particular subject, huh?
I, I think it'd be appropriate to read it, yes.
Oh, I'm gonna read, I'll read it right now.
Okay.
This is sent by Catherine Homestead. Here are the questions of the feudant. I have read the DOT report on a proposal to remove the bridge over Otter Brook and have these questions. Number one, why remove the bridge instead of replacing or repairing it, especially in this time when federal funding is flowing into infrastructure projects? Number two, what exactly is the undeveloped parcel south side of the bridge designated for an L-shaped turnaround? Or where exactly, what decision? Or where exactly, what decisions, number three, what decisions and actions have been made by whom? What are the next steps? Number five, how does this project relate to the Riverfront Development Project? Number six, how many days of study did the August third, two thousand twenty report represent? Seven, is the data on traffic flow numbers available? And eight, will there be opportunities for public comment? And we've got a gentleman from DOT.
Can you hear me?
We can, absolutely.
My name's Fred Leesha, Regional Planner for the Main Department of Transportation, assigned to Region Five, which is a first to the North of Scott. And with me is Ben Foster, who's the head of operating division of the Department of Transportation. All the questions that you raised or were raised, we plan to answer. So you sort of set the outline, so that it's fine. Glad to be here. Normally we drive in three or four hours, but this makes it a little more convenient anyways. DOT is currently looking at what we call low volume bridges around the state that are in our ownership. But we feel a subtle volume that they may not warrant full replacement or repair. And we don't see where there would be, you know, any, any increase in the future. By the way, A A D E in that area, four hundred and sixty vehicles a day. That's two hundred and sixty trips on the average back and forth through line of cell streets. To answer the question she raised. The bridge has been evaluated and then you can get into the technical components of it. It's got some serious deficiencies from an engineering standpoint. There's scouring of the abutments, there's cracking in the foundations that are holding it. The bridge was built in nineteen thirty, so it's technically standing to see its age and beyond that. So, uh, with that, I'd like Ben possibly to chime in on what the deficiencies are. And then we can talk about the impact, the potential impact of what I looked at, given my helm and ground observations at the site. Uh, Ben, are you in?
Yes, sir. All right, thank you. Uh, the bridge is in poor condition. Uh, we inspect the bridge, uh, on a twenty-four month cycle. Uh, we have trained inspectors and based on its condition, um, the bridge was deemed in poor condition. Uh, the element that's probably most restrictive right now are the wings. Uh, the wings which retain the fill, which support the roadway. Uh, those are, and are getting more towards a serious condition. Uh, when we did our assessment of the structure, uh, we anticipate the remaining service life of that structure to be five years, estimated. At that five years, something needs to be done. And that's why, that's why we're starting this process today. Uh, another significant risk is, uh, the bridge is deemed scour critical. The angle of which the water attacks, uh, the abutment. Um, the water does not, during high flows, the water does not go straight through. It actually attacks it, the water goes down and digs it up. Uh, one of those channels is easily weightable where the other one is, uh, you have to be a lot taller than myself to be able to weight it. Um, because it's significantly deeper, probably, I don't know, six, five to six feet or so. Uh, so that's what deems it. Uh, we have five years left. Uh, this process, um, you know, there was a question early on, like, why are we doing this? Uh, DOT is gaining probably twenty or plus bridges a year based on environmental requirements. Uh, we have culverts out there that were eight feet wide. They are now becoming twenty, twenty-five feet because of a thing called one point two bank full. And we need to follow those environmental regulations in order to get our permits. So because of that, our inventory is growing at a very rapid rate. So in order to manage this, and I'm not gonna, everybody doesn't have money, the state doesn't have enough, the federal doesn't have enough. And the towns do not have, we understand that. So we are evaluating bridges with a lower, uh, traffic count, under three or four hundred, with a manageable detour, which means that it's less than five or six miles from abutment to abutment. Uh, but we, this one's about two point six miles. So when you multiply your abutment to abutment detour times the traffic, if that's less than, uh, one thousand eight hundred, we're looking at all of our bridges statewide that meet that and starting conversations like this as potential removal. All right, because we are gaining, uh, bridges and, uh, if we do not make these difficult decisions, we are going to move to post or close a significant portion of our inventory. We just cannot keep up, uh, based on the current fundings.
I think it's also important to note that a lot of the bridges in the state of Maine were built before the thirties and they're coming to the end of their useful life. And we prioritize all the bridges in the inventory, right from those that are absolutely essential, not a lost case in point. And right down to the, to the smallest bridge that we have, I've been down in Amity and Hodgson and other places in the county that's similar meetings being held all over the state. So, start with a picking on this, it's just we, our money's, we're focusing on where to invest our limited resources. Despite the fact that there's still none in all of us, this still isn't probably enough to take care of every road and bridge in the state. It, 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 it just isn't going to happen. We're still gonna have short calls and so we're trying to deal with that efficiently as possible. And we know that there's some pain with this, but, uh, we're trying to be objective in our evaluation system. Uh, a couple of things that can occur, uh, I, I just want to point out that Ben, as all engineers in the DOT safety trades are top of our list. I mean, whether it's our safety, work zone safety, or public safety. As the bridge deteriorates, we may have to take steps, as we did in Madawaska, for example. We got to a point where we had to post that bridge at five tons, which is not enough even having an ambulance. Unless the ambulance right now is restricted to what, ten mile an hour, right? Then going across the international bridge is the only vehicle allowed at that time. You're really looking at two quarter ton pickup. And, uh, that would be something we might have to consider with this bridge and other bridges because we're not going to put the public at risk, whether it's a, a school bus or whether it's a fire truck or an ambulance or whatever. As it deteriorates further, then further steps taken to be able to mitigate any potential harm to the public. I just pointed that out, if that's the deterioration period we're into, as Ben mentioned, five years of, uh, possible failure. Or it's probably less than that till we take some action to stem the flow there and restrict the use of it. I can ask Ben, he, I think Ben and I talked about a number that would cost to prepare such a bridge, uh, to put it in some minimum condition, and, uh, I don't know what that would entail, Ben, but you have a number, I believe that you have an estimate.
Yeah, because of the environmental restrictions and getting that one point two bank full, um, we're looking at one and a quarter million dollars, uh, we, to replace the structure. Uh, because of the wings and, you know, there's no cost effective solution to limp it along so far. So replacement would, would be, would be needed, uh, to alleviate the structural distress and the scouring that's currently going on.
How does that affect if that, if that bridge or the concrete bridge is taken out? How will that affect the calvert situation under the tracks, just downstream from that?
I, I believe that's getting taken care of on a separate project this year.
It is, and it's an attempt to also restore habitat in the stream. If this bridge are ultimately taken out and the culverts downstream are dead, for example, then the rehabilitation would occur, including that area for, uh, fish passage and to restore the stream to a more natural condition.
Is it?
Our environmental people are already on top of that, uh, lower reach already.
Are they, is the, is the idea to remove the calvert and, and cut the line, the, the rail line? Or just shore it up so that it continues to operate the way it's operating or?
Replacing it with a new, modern type of culvert that would replace the bent stuff that's, you know, the end of it right now are turned right out, is debris laden.
Yep.
It would be to replace that with, with a great opening. When Ben talks about one, one and a half, if it's been one and a half bank full, that means we have to be able to pass the water at one and a half times the volume when the river is at its highest point. We have to be able to pass that, not only the volume in the river, but a, a factor of fifty percent more.
So, thank you.
So you, I got a question. So you've, you've identified a list of bridges across the state, obviously, that it weren't either in your mind removal. When, when will you know which, what the final list is? Which ones make that list or has that been determined?
Uh, that, that hasn't been determined and now it's based off of, uh, traffic counts and detour routes. Uh, we do not start this process until it reaches about, you know, eight, five to eight years, you know, of its remaining service life is left. So if it's in service, it's acting, acting, we're not just gonna go rip it out because it's in service. But once it comes time to take an action, whether that action would be to replace or remove or so forth, um, we're starting conversations like this for removal.
And I guess the problem of the conversation we're trying to have is, you know, I've looked at the situation, I went down, uh, I came up this winter, and I've looked at the traffic patterns that were, it was a day after a snow, so you see a lot of, you know, where the cars are going, the vehicles are going. You know, there's public works down there, uh, there's a, there's a metal, uh, scrapyard. And, uh, there's one we tied down near the Subly entrance to the area. There wasn't a lot of movement in the snow, because, you know, I know that probably those are unscientific as we get. Uh, it was observed and most of the traffic, uh, was coming in and going back towards the south end. Having said that, how what we're looking for is if that bridge were to go, well, first of all, how important is it to you? And if it is a decision to, to remove it rather than to find a way to fix it, what, what is the mitigating, uh, what can we do to mitigate? I know that, uh, an L turn or a jump handle, uh, I've got mentioned in the, uh, engineers asked, how are we going to put a turn around? Well, how what DOT does is acquire land for those kinds of things where a vehicle like a fire truck would be able to turn around, to say, uh, our school bus. Uh, I, I, there's not a lot of residential down there and I don't know the demographics of the, of the residents, whether they're involved in that. Uh, we, it's conceivable we could put a turnaround on both sides of the, uh, both sides of the bridge. Those are two mitigating things we can do. I also know that there's doing a lock job in the area, uh, and whether you want flow through traffic or whether it'd be better to have dead ends, I'm not sure. I just throw those out as things that I observe.
So the, the culvert underneath the tracks, are you taking out the tracks or are you gonna put them back down?
No, the tracks are in preservation, potentially in any future use. The DOT never abandoned the tracks and, uh, at this point, there's no intent to at this point.
So we're, you guys are proposing putting a new culvert underneath tracks that further on down those tracks have trees the size of probably my twelve inch tablet sitting on here. And all the money that would be put into bringing those tracks back up to code. But MDOT is proposing putting, taking out this bridge and putting a turning, turnaround. Is that kind of what I'm getting, guys?
Yeah, essentially it's two things. What is it, we, we, uh, when we abandon a track and we keep it in ownership, we have a responsibility to, to, to do certain things and to environmental damage is a potential washout because the way the culvert's up, bent and broken, they're not pumping at all. That's why we're repairing, replacing those.
But you can see.
We won't let it repair it, if we're gonna repair it, we have to replace it because of the environmental constraints around it too.
But you can see the conclusion I'm trying to draw. We're, 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 we're gonna, we're gonna tear out a bridge on something that our citizens use daily. I use it daily. I know a lot of equipment, especially this summer, has used it because of the bridge work. Because you got fifteen feet and, well, tractors are getting a little bit bigger nowadays. And we're gonna keep a track that hasn't been used in how many, how many years has that track not been used? You can see the conclusion I'm drawing here, guys. So to me, this is, this is, and this is what a lot of the citizens have been saying. We need to keep this road. I mean, I, I for one, don't really agree with, with putting a turnaround there. There's, there's a lot of merit to that road. It might not seem like it and numbers may not seem like it. But ease and convenience, and this has been going on since the thirties when this bridge was made. So for us as, as a town, at least from my point of view, it's difficult to have you guys come in and I, I get you guys are the messengers and I'm not trying to shoot you, but.
Have you shot that before?
Well, that's, that's unfortunate, but you can, you can see where, you can see where we're coming from. This is of, a kind of a less known vital artery to our town. And a lot of people use this and I for one have used it a lot. So for us to really be on board with this is gonna be a hard pill to swallow. I for one am not. Uh, when I heard about this, I was really discouraged. There's gotta be a way that you guys can fix this, not for one point two or four million dollars. There's gotta be a way, we gotta put our thinking caps on here and be able to fix this problem without spending over a million.
Well, you know, uh, I've looked down the road a little ways before, and I've seen wooden bridges, you know, and I saw, I saw a posting over the St. John's that said, bill trucks greater than two hundred and sixty thousand pounds, pretty impressive. But the thing is that we don't build wooden bridges in the community, the, the DOT has to follow certain standards. So therefore those numbers are probably very real. Uh, we're constrained by design criteria, professional engineering standards. And so if the middle scheme is a, a bridge over the St. John's, even though they both function the same, it's just we're on a different track. Having said that, it, it, let's just assume one point two billion dollars. Some of the other things we're, we're discussing with communities is if it, it's a local road with a DOT bridge stuck in the middle of it, which makes it a real kind of odd hybrid. So, uh, there's consideration by other communities to, uh, go on a cost sharing basis with the DOT to preserve the bridge and build, put it back to its original standard. I believe that we could still own the bridge and we would, you know, go back into the queue. Would it be maintained any better the next hundred years? I can guarantee, I would hope that we, we do, we need to catch up a little bit. But having said that, that's an alternative, uh, whether you want to explore that or not, or whether you, uh, totally outlandish, that's, you know, your call. But there is an option there, keep it, but, uh, we just don't have the money in the inventory to be able to, uh, cover the load.
So, I think it was question, on that question, there was a potential that we could just accept it, the bridge.
I think that's one of the questions is what's, what local options are there if, if DOT is gonna tear it out? Is, if the city took it, I mean, what is that, what is involved with that?
We have a, we have a municipal partnership initiative. We use it a lot of towns and other cities around the state where the town desires to have something, but it's not tied on DOT's list. But with the cost sharing, it makes it more easily achievable because we can come up with a match a lot of times to accommodate it. Whether it's a sidewalk in, in, uh, a community that, uh, or, uh, we're doing it, uh, for example, in Lubbock, there's a bicycle enthusiast who's, and he, they have three quarters of a mile of shoulders put on the highway down there and paid a share, uh, for the town and the DOT department with that, with that, uh, community to build those things. That's the kind of, uh, we have a sliding scale, uh, cost sharing. I, I looked up what, uh, based on your evaluation, what the city's evaluation, the end of January, uh, rolling down, of course I don't have. But it would, we could do a fifty fifty under our own, our own agreement, uh, our, our own rules, municipal partnership initiative. I don't know if that's something that the city would want to entertain, uh, but at that point, the bridge stays in play and, uh... and it would become part of your pot, uh, effort, and, uh,
Fred, there is another option. There is another option for him. I think they were interested in taking responsibility for it. Um, D O T would, uh, uh, be happy to discuss, uh, an agreement, which would then, uh, transfer responsibility over to the municipality, and D O T would continue to inspect it, uh, because, um, and assure its safety. Uh, but when it came time, we would also, uh, be the ones who would post it or close it if deemed unsafe. And at that point, uh, any, any future stuff would have to be the responsibility of one hundred percent of the town.
And as that happens, are you gonna, if that were to happen, I should say, is the D O T gonna say, you have to fix it, and then it's all, do this, then it's all in our, completely in our lap?
Correct.
Okay, that's all?
I would say that the problems have been identified, and now there's no burying him back in the dirt again. For the city, in my opinion, to take that responsibility on, bear the burden of that.
Knowing that.
It's hard to swallow even fifty percent. I don't know what we would do.
What was up with the chat?
Ken, you've been talking with the, with D O T with regards to the railroad bridge. I, I know you've sent out a couple of chats through Zoom, but would you just vocalize what, what you're trying to share with everybody?
Sure. We've been having a little bit of confusion as we've been working our way through this. Uh, in the meeting last Wednesday, down there, uh, on Limestone Street, we looked at the culvert project, and, uh, the indication was at that time, and I believe it was a representative from, from the main Department of Transportation, he was an environmental specialist, indicated that culvert would be removed, and the railroad banks would be sloped down, the stream restored for trunk habitat from, from the river all the way to the outpour of Limestone Street Bridge. Um, when I, when I asked further, they did not seem to be aware of Mr. Micho's work at the Limestone, at the Limestone Street Bridge on Autumn Brook. There lies my confusion.
Well, the, the, the thing is, is that the specialists may not know that, because I deal with his boss, Eric Ham, down in Augusta, Eric and I have been in constant conversation, uh, about actually this bridge was a key point of whether or not it would be removed or not removed, and what they could do to further the mitigation upstream. And I just told, you know, basically, we came to the conclusion that the timing is going to rate now would have to be a second phase. So I wouldn't expect Eric necessarily to share that with somebody down the line. That, uh, so we're in constant contact. D O T, well, a lot of players, but, uh, Eric Ham, forget the chief of that whole section, so, uh, I'm then touched with that.
So Fred, one of the other questions that was asked by one of our citizens that is a resident on that road and uses that bridge every day is, how can they, how can a citizen get comments to D O T? What's, and how is D O T gonna be responding to public comment that, that is delivered?
This is only an informational meeting that we've talked at, and, uh, said, the D O T, if we proceed, at some point, will conduct a formal public hearing, where required to do that, and there'll be comment hearings, and there'll be input taken at that point. They can comment right now. Actually, Dennis, uh, you can share my, uh, contact information with that person or any other people. And we'll, if letters want to be written, I'll pass them along to, uh, Ben and others that, uh, but, uh, we will go through a formal public hearing, and there'll be public notice. We have senators taking notes. We, we do a thorough job, and, uh, there'll be a formal public, uh, notice in the, in the period. And I don't have a date for that yet. This is more, just, uh, just try to throw it out in the public, say, this is something we're thinking about, and this, you know, get the information started and be discussed.
This, that was my question, is that you're gonna have a public hearing. Will your public hearing be, will your public hearing be in line with one of our council meetings? Or is it, are you just gonna pick a date as far as that? Because I, my question was, I wanna have a public hearing on this. If you're gonna have a public hearing, then there's, as long as it's coordinated with us, then there's no need for us to have a public hearing.
I would suggest that M D O T has-
You don't seem fully aware of it.
Well, I, Fred, I'd suggest that you guys have your public hearing the same time we have our public hearing at a council meeting. We just, I mean, we just went through, um, you know, a few, uh, charter changes where we can get the word out to our citizens in, in, in a decent fashion, and I would, I would hope D, M D O T would entertain working with the city of Caribou and having your public hearing at the same time we have ours.
They, they definitely notify. I do not know whether or not they can be co-joined or not. I, I do not have any answer.
Could you find out?
Yeah. That would just be my concern, that's all. Is that, is-
I just don't, usually, we post a public notice, uh, you know, and everything of D O T, and we conduct the meeting, and, but I understand your concern.
Put in the Lewiston Journal, and they have a public hearing at ten AM on Thursday.
Yeah.
Nobody, that, that would be, nobody knows. That would just, I mean, I know we would know, but-
Which again, guys, I'm not trying to shoot the messenger, but this is typical M D O T. You know, you put it in some journal, and, and, you know, we don't, we don't know of it up here, you know?
And that's why I was down the process right now and discussing with you, and I would think that any, regardless where the public meeting is, that, um, we would communicate with you, and you could get it on your website, on your Facebook page, it would be on ours, and get the word out any way possible. Um, you know, that's why we're starting conversations right now, uh, potentially after five years before any actions happen.
We do have an extension of all three. Uh, we have the whole D U department. We, I noticed you just kept on discussing, uh, your public notice process is restricted, failed with the newspapers. D O T is, used to have to be constrained by that doing, we've gone to media, social media, platform, follow, uh, get the word out. So, and all of that, we still do notify affected about it. So anybody in that neighborhood who's definitely, we go to the task force and we send notice to those folks, immediately abutting the project.
When you say immediately abutting, you're talking about creating a deal-
Anybody on Limestone Street.
Anybody on Limestone Street, right? Okay.
I ask all the questions, go around. Do you have any more questions, Doc? Do you have anything, Courtney?
Um, just a quick, and maybe you already answered this. Um, when you did the traffic study, was that only conducted over one day? What, how, when you got the two hundred and sixty vehicles per day, over what period of time was that conducted?
That numbers comes from our engineering department. Every three years, D O T takes a look at, uh, traffic count from state. We, we cycle the state in three, uh, three year cycles, you know, north, middle, south, north, middle, south. And, uh, those are updated out every three years. My observation is just one of anecdotal, looking at what's going on, and actually spending four or five hours there observing on a business day, what's going on in general in that neighborhood. I was with Jay Cam. I asked Jay to attend, you know, go along with me, uh, see if I had any questions, and, uh, and probably, we were paying N M D C to give us assistance in transportation matters in the county. So, uh, there's a four or five hour, I'm gonna be honest with you, I, it is not a scientific. I need to familiarize myself with the neighborhood, so to speak, and that was one way to do it.
Sure, and you, but you did say you did that in the winter time, right? After a snowstorm or a snow event?
Oh, it was, it was a couple of days after, yeah, because I go up that day and go back that day, and, uh, and, uh, you know, it wasn't permanent. There was, there was a dusting of snow on the road, you could see the tracks in the snow. That's what I was reverting to.
Right.
So it wasn't a, nobody was driving seventy miles an hour in the state, it was all higher speed than that, so it was a kind of snow event.
Fred, before a significant decision gets made to close that bridge, would there be a follow-up actual traffic count study done on this road before, to, to check against those?
I could ask, yes, I can, I can make it required. I, I, it could be, it could be, uh, actual tubes and counts, or it could be, uh, somebody observing. Uh, I'd have to find out, but I can speak to the people, uh, that are in charge of that, if that's something. We're gonna have to come, come out there.
There is a D O T office here in Caribou. I wouldn't think it'd take much to get some tubes out.
And the traffic session is based out of Augusta.
Yeah.
And that's half the problem, guys. And that's half the problem. And that's half the problem. It's based out of Augusta. We're in northern Maine.
Yeah, we have, we have some things that are centrally based, and some things are regionally based, and, uh, traffic just happens to be in Augusta.
Do you have anything more, Courtney?
We have traffic engineers in the, in the county, uh, but, uh, they don't do the coun, council concentrated. The other thing we do observe, observe every three years, we have to, trucks goes around and actually photograph and, and measure bumps and look at cracks and everything else, so that we can develop plans of painless roads. That goes along with second story along with the county. So, uh, you can't defer that to the field. There's just too much money involved with that kind of stuff.
Counselor Willie?
Uh, as one of the people who travel that road, we consider it our, uh, our shortcut um, around, around the traffic patterns in Caribou. By looking at it in the winter, that was probably the least, that road is so awful that no one drives on it in the winter. Um, you lose your car. Um, so, so the summertime is when people buzz through there. And, and as, uh, Councilor Air mentioned earlier, they're working on the other bridge on the, on one, what is it, eighty, what's the?
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine. And so everybody's going through that street. There was a traffic backup just the other day. Uh, granted, it's to, it's to go around the bridge, but, um, but a lot of people use it a lot of the time. And, and, you know, you say two and a half, we, we travel, we travel a lot up here, and to get anywhere, we have to travel. And so to take a two and a half mile stretch out of, um, someone's day, um, you know, is, is a big deal to some people, especially if they're running, um, snow removal equipment, or, you know, they're, they're working on someone's home, whatever. So I, I, it just, it is a concern, and I'm glad we've got a few years to, to see if we can work out a, a fix.
I will, I will see what I can do to get the traffic to, uh, I, I, I'll, first of all, find out what their schedule is and where they're at this year, uh, and see what we can do to get that number, okay? And by the way, a traffic count is something that you respond for, you know, a month or two months, something like that. It's a, it's a shot in time. It might be a week or so, and then basically it's within time. And from that, they can extrapolate numbers, take on other, other, uh, empirical data that they have in their database, and do a very, pretty good, pretty good guess of actual use.
Joan?
No, I'm good.
Mark? Do you have any more questions? Well, thank you, gentlemen, for your time, and, uh, we appreciate, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to come, I'm calling from Reedfield, so I missed that bullet, but thanks a lot. You guys have a good night, by the way.
Keep us updated. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
We'll wait hearing from them, I guess. On a set nine B, discussion of possible actions regarding the R S U election warrant. And if I understand correctly, if we do this tonight, this saves us having a special meeting for four minutes at the end of the month.
Mayor and councilors, where you're going to have a meeting on May twenty-sixth, you could potentially have it on that agenda, but that same night is gonna be the R S U's same budget meeting night as well. So it's-
No, we could potentially-
Potentially have one.
Well, I, I'd like to keep the one on the twenty-sixth, just to that, one agenda item. The personnel, personnel meeting. So if we do this tonight, then we don't have to worry about that, right?
By state law, they, at the R S U, when they have an election warrant, they are required by state law as the R S U to then give that to the city, and U S city officials are required by state law to sign the warrant. So there's, there's really, there's no action other than to approve it. It's just a matter of when you're going to be approving it.
We didn't sign, I did, I voted against it last year, and I didn't sign it.
True.
So-
I recognize that.
You know, I, I just, what, what are we talking about? We have no information on it. We have nothing. What are we talking about? Why are we talking about it? We have nothing. We wanna skip the cart here to get the horse. We don't have any. We don't know what their budget is. At the bare minimum, we have nothing. And yet, we're gonna talk about election warrants.
So, again, they're going to, they'll be acting on this on May twenty-sixth. That's the night when the R S U board says, this is, this is the number we wanna take to the voters, and I, I recognize the concern that you've expressed, Councilor Morrell. They will, they've given us the election warrant to, to hold the election in June. And the language that's in the warrant is also dictated by state statute. The indication that they've given me right now is that their budget is not going up from last year's budget as far as the tax requirement. And I, if, if you wait until after May twenty-sixth, the concern that we have, and Danielle can speak to this, is the turnaround timeframe to make sure that if they act on it the night of the twenty-sixth, then we'd need, you would need as a council in order to make sure the election's able to move forward to take action on that warrant the next day. And so it's, it's an option. We have the warrant already. If you want, you could act on it tonight. But again, it's, it's approving the warrant that they're required by state law to send to you so that the election can move forward.
We either do it tonight, or we're gonna do it on the twenty-eighth. It doesn't, I guess it doesn't matter, make one way or the other.
I'm, we just accept the warrant. We really don't have a big, uh, except the, we don't have a choice. I mean, it's part of, part of the law, so.
Well, look, Mark, you had some questions on that.
Well, I had a discussion about this. I voted against forming the R S U back when it took place, for two reasons. Number one, a town with a higher valuation was gonna end up paying more per student to educate that client. And number two, we, as a city council, we're gonna lose all control over the process.
Here we are.
It went to the voters. The whole school board voted for it, all the rest of the Caribou City Council voted for it, and the citizens voted for this thing. I have to vote, like I did last year, to go forward with the warrant, not because I want to, but because that's what the people voted for. You get what you vote for. I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to, your motion is to approve the warrant? Seconded by Mark. Disco, further discussion? Air?
Yep.
Boma?
Aye.
Gawn?
Yes.
Morrell?
No.
Terrio?
Aye.
Willie?
Yes.
Aye. Um, six, favor, one opposed, motion carries.
You know, maybe in the future, they oughta take their package and send it to the state. This is quite a dog and pony show. Send it to the state. State says we have no say in it. Why waste our time?
And what happens if we don't sign it? Are they gonna come chop off our fingers? Do you still get all your fingers?
I do. They wanna bring many when they come, but they might get them. It's ridiculous. It's such a joke. And then we sit and talk about regionalization of other things? With something like this? Who in their right mind would vote for any regionalization, regionalization of any health services or ambulance service or fire? Who in their right mind would vote for that? Crazy. Send it to the state. We still haven't, I still have not got an answer on the, the one point two million dollars. I still not have that answer. And I don't wanna hear Doak or anybody else up there tell me, well, go read the newspaper, we explained it. I'm a sitting councilor, I've been elected official, I asked for information, and I still haven't got it. What's, a year later? What's it gonna take? What's it going to take?
I can answer that one. We withdraw from the RSU?
I'm on board. In a heartbeat.
As a city? We start the process? We want to. Just like Leinster did. It doesn't make sense, does it? None of this makes sense.
Well.
I agree with you Doug, one hundred percent.
If somebody could explain to me and show me numbers that we're, we're creating Einsteins for the costs that are occurring, okay, I guess I can't argue that. Everybody wants to be proud. I'm proud of my community. I'm proud of my education system, but I'm not that far left to say we got the best of anything. Costs are going up. Anyway, I would like that put to Doak, Mr. Doak, again, I want the information on that. The, uh, the 1.2 million dollars. It's not going to go by the wayside. As long as I sit in this seat, I'm going to hold somebody accountable to explain to me where that money is and then I'll decimate that and send it to the supporters. They have a right to know where that money is. It's gone hush. We hear nothing. Thank you.
In lieu of time, nine C, D and E, these are introductions of ordinances. I don't think we, we can either introduce and we don't need to have a bunch of discussion about these versus introduction. I think everybody will have, everybody read these or looked at these? Or, and we're going to have time to look at them before we have a public hearing anyway, so I don't think we need to. We have a few other things here to discuss, so.
Well, we got to introduce it.
All we got to do is introduce.
Yeah.
So, um, nine C.
I'll, I make a, I'd like to introduce nine C, D and E, introduction ordinance number eight, two thousand and one series charter amendment, city real estate transaction requirements. Also introduction of ordinance number nine, two thousand and twenty-one series rubbish hauler licensing and introduction of ordinance number ten, two thousand and twenty-one series administrative amendments to title thirteen.
There we go.
Introduce.
Then we'll schedule public hearings. I don't know when we're going to do these.
I'd, I'd wait for a couple of weeks here and, and make, let's get, let's get Dennis off to Utah safe and sound before, before he, his brain hemorrhages from all the stuff we're
We don't, we don't either. I don't think there's actually these on the, uh, June fourteenth agenda, so.
Well, I don't think we have to, if we want them on the November ballot, we don't have, we get them in in September, so we've still got
Yeah, we don't have to.
Yeah, we've got plenty of time on this.
Public hearing on these for the next meeting.
If you want them on the November ballot, the council needs to take action before September first.
September first, yeah.
You definitely have time to.
Yeah, June, July and August.
Yeah, we've got these ones here. We got to go back which we are still open ended. Maybe we'll do those all at the same, if we get a good have a light agenda. Whatever.
Dreamer.
Full business, ten A, discussion of possible acts regarding TIF for, TIF? Credit enhancement agreement with Gary Gawn.
Mayor and council, we, we introduced this as a, as an tonight. It's back on your agenda again for more discussion. It's, it's a matter of preference of the council. What would you like to do? Is there other information that you'd like us to pull together or what are, what are your wishes?
The nine hundred thousand, I think it was, Mr. Gawnier is going to invest was?
That was the indication.
The indication. So it's piggly, piggly, might, might not. Do we know what that number is? And I'm asking this because I'd like to know. What is the windfall for the taxpayers also? I'm fully in support of Mr. Gawnier's move, but it's an eighty-twenty as I read it.
Right.
What's the twenty percent that's going to come to the people to help offset their burden out of the project also? So if it's nine hundred there and we have the tenant who's bringing in over a half a million of new equipment? Yeah. I'm on board. I just would like to know. So I can see, you know, and I've got to keep a business hat on about it too, that we, we have an idea of what those numbers are and what that eighty-twenty to some may not understand what, what is the actual dollar value that's coming?
And just to be clear, the eighty-twenty, this is, the eighty-twenty is based on the incremental difference. And what that means is if you look at the taxes that were paid last year and the value of the building that gets assessed after these improvements are installed, say it goes from a six hundred thousand dollar valuation last year to a one point five million dollar valuation this year, the difference in the taxes from what they were paying last year to this year, the eighty-twenty is based on the difference between the new taxes and the old taxes. So it's not, he's not going to get eighty percent of all of his taxes on the property. It's just, just the difference. And I can't tell you right now that that nine hundred thousand dollar investment is going to equate to a one and a half million dollar assessed value for that property. That, that's just the indication that based on the work that he's doing to get those offices up and suitable for the tenant, that's what he's putting into it. But the, at the end of the day, the assessed value still may be a million dollars. Or one point two.
That's a touch of dollars, what I'm trying to say.
Right.
A rough, you know, if, if we're saying he's going to add nine hundred to the project or the overall valuation would be say nine to a million, you have to take out what is already there because it's only on the new capture.
I'm glad you brought that up because I had this conversation with Dennis the other day and clarified to me exactly what you're bringing up.
People should know.
Because as you said, people don't understand the eighty percent.
Hundred percent on board. It's a good investment. It's keeping a business in the commu, well, it's keeping the business and it's, another one is growing by upgrading their building. I'm a hundred percent in favor of it, but I just, I think people should hear the numbers. So when the ones that have a bad taste in their mouth of the last TIF that went through the pipeline will understand better and maybe we won't receive as many calls about it.
Penny, I know you're on the line. Can you look up what the assessed value was for that property last year? I think it was around six hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to pull it up right now.
Thank you.
It doesn't have to be to the nickel. You get my point and the drill I'm making. It's an exercise so that people listening can understand. We're not giving the farm away. This is, this is a fair business deal for both the citizens and the business and both business owners.
I'm glad you're bringing that up to clarify that. Tiffs can be very very confusing.
Well, it can be very one-sided.
And there's a hundred ways to write a TIF.
Yeah, there's, there's, it's all this.
And, and this is one reason why in two thousand and eighteen, the city council adopted an ordinance that requires that we can't give as a city more than eighty percent of that increment back to an interested party. Because of some of the, the concern about the, the Hilltop TIF district.
My reasoning for my question is I have been asked. I try my best to explain it, but I'd like the people to hear from the council, the manager, that this is a win for everybody. A true win.
The fifteen years is, we can't, as you explained to me, the fifteen years, that number is based on the life of the building. We can't TIF more than that. Was that the, or?
The TIF district itself has a maximum life of thirty years and we are already fifteen years into that life and that's why this agreement is only good for fifteen years, the, the rest of, of that TIF period. Penny, do you have that?
Yeah, it's six hundred ninety thousand two hundred.
So the taxes that they paid last year, that's six hundred and ninety thousand two hundred times the tax rate that we had would have been about sixteen thousand dollars of taxes that they owed last year. So if, if we say their investment doubles the value of that property to where we're now close to one point four million dollars, the twenty percent that the city's going to be retaining, we'd get three thousand dollars of new taxes coming to the city. And they would potentially be receiving that other thirteen thousand dollars back to help offset some of the costs that, that they've incurred to try to retain this business and all the employees that are currently in the city rather than having them move.
And it doesn't include the investment of the business who is stepping up to the plate with the new equipment, the new, you know, you don't have to run the numbers. I'm just trying to do a drill here for the people. They understand that this is a win-win, a true win-win.
Definitely agree with you.
The equipment would potentially be Betty eligible. That's a program that businesses can utilize. If they're buying new equipment and bringing it into the state, the state allows them to effectively write off or not have to pay taxes on that equipment. But even though the business owner doesn't have to pay taxes on that equipment, the state still sends a certain, is it sixty percent, sixty-six percent, Penny?
It's, uh, last year was fifty-three. Statutorily, they need to reimburse the municipality for fifty percent of the lost revenue. However, there is an enhanced Betty program for municipalities that meet requirements that their personal property is a greater percentage of their valuation. And we, we have a lot of Betty equipment just because of the types of businesses that we have in town.
So potentially, and we've informed the, we've informed Gary Gawnier about that program and talked with the potential tenant and let them know if they declare that equipment as new equipment, they won't have to pay taxes on it. And that's estimated at six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars of value, but the city is still going to be getting that fifty percent of that value coming back to us by that business coming to, to Kiraboo.
So if a new business wants to buy equipment, how does a new business know to go after this type of Betty equipment?
That's one of the services that Penny in the assessing office does with her assistant, Tony. They, they go out and they, they actually knock doors on businesses and let them know that if they will submit their information, they can get that submitted to the state and be eligible for those funds.
Yeah, but jeez, I had my bluing tables out to the gun shop and I never heard of anything like this. That came from out of state.
Okay. It's, it's an annual program, so you can still
Is it up on the website?
Yes, every, everything is on the website. But give me a call tomorrow. We can talk about it.
Oh, no, I don't use them anymore. They're actually for sale if anybody wants them.
Well, thank you. That's what I was driving at.
Okay, any, any more discussions, questions? So what, the wishes of council to move forward with this or what, where are we at?
I'd just like some more information like Doug said, but I mean, some real honest goodness numbers. Rough stuff. This is, rough stuff is difficult with TIF. We need to have a plan, execute it. That's just where I am.
Okay, to clarify where we're going with this. So does any no problem with how the TIF is written, what we're doing. You just want numbers.
I'm, I'm good. I, I did what I set out to do tonight was to bring it to a topic. I am one hundred percent in favor of this.
I am too. I mean, I don't.
I just wanted it to discussion to prove the fact that we are not putting the, the taxpayers in a similar situation that happened a short time ago with the last TIF, that this is a true win-win in my opinion for both parties.
I would make a motion to accept it as the, as written, twenty percent from, uh, the city retains twenty percent, eighty percent to Gawnier's for fifteen years. Do I need to say anything else?
So this is just eighty-twenty for fifteen years. This is incremental where?
On the new capture.
On the new capture.
On the new capture.
This is eighty-twenty for fifteen on just the new valuation.
Just to clarify, I have no problem, Tom, with you and the numbers. I'm always willing to get the numbers myself, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands the point of my drill was to, anyway.
Absolutely. Motion.
Second.
Second, more, more discussion on this?
Is, go ahead, please.
There is a tenant moving in?
They have.
Yep.
Yes.
And there is this purchase of equipment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah?
And I'm sure the agreement would be countered on the fact that the plan goes as. Right?
I'm not worried about.
I'm assuming everything we said is written in some kind of paperwork.
We can get you a copy of the lease if, if you want to see that.
I just need to take someone's word for it.
Right.
That's, that, this agreement includes what Doug's, Doug's bringing up a valid point. Do we know all the numbers for sure?
The hinge number is what the new assessed value is going to be and we don't know that number until all the improvements are in and everything's done and so.
Someone's going to buy a necessary machine. I want to know if it's getting purchased. And that where it's on the books, whether it's Betty or some other program, that's not important right now.
I, I'm fine with, the tenant's fine. I have no issues with the tenant. I know exactly what they plan on doing and I think it's absolutely amazing. I just, I just do worry about what the end number is. Because you can say, you know, I'm going to spend nine hundred thousand on something and then all of a sudden you spend five or six hundred. You don't spend a hundred. So the numbers we kind of worked out don't really work out.
So if they spend less than the nine hundred thousand dollars, this is set up on a proportional amount. It's an eighty-twenty and so.
So it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, exactly, I know.
We're not giving them a set dollar amount to say, we're going to give you this much money. We're saying it's, it's eighty-twenty. If you invest a million dollars in the project, it's still an eighty-twenty. If you only do two hundred thousand dollars, it's an eighty-twenty.
It's because of the new capture.
Right.
And it could actually, they could at some point get to the valuation, get back to in a portion of years where they don't get any benefit from the TIF.
So in two thousand and twenty-two, they have a full valuation, a new full evaluation and there's going to be depreciation over time. And so that eighty-twenty split is based on the valuation over time. So they're not guaranteed that for the fifteen years they're going to get that full valuation amount. It's again, all proportional to the assessed value of the property each year.
Which I'd say again, as I said to the others, I congratulate Mr. Gawnier and his client on Gary's part for, for helping us retain a solid business that's been in this city forever, I think. And, and allowing and, and thanking the client who's willing to stay here and expand to the levels that I, if I understand, we're going to have an amazing facility in this town by the time it's all said and done.
Evaluation.
Yeah.
Bring it up.
So my hats off to both of them and congratulations to both Gary and the tenant for, for staying here in Kiraboo.
Air?
Aye.
Beauma?
Aye.
Gawn?
Aye.
Morrell?
Aye.
Terrio?
Aye.
Willie?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. That one passed. Full business. Oh, see, nine B, discussion of possible action regarding collective bargaining unit agreement with Kiraboo professional firefighters. AF local five one nine one.
Mayor, I'd recommend we table those until after our executive session to discuss those in more detail.
So that's it. So now we, those next two will put in the new session. Yeah, because we have labor negotiations. Important discussion by mayor and council members. Did anybody have, did you have something on the public safety?
Yeah, just real quick. As Dennis mentioned, we did meet, our committee met on the thirteenth with the architecture firm and they kind of brought us up to speed on their thoughts about some of the designs that they had looked at back a few years ago. Some of us were new to the council, so we didn't know a whole lot about it. So we got to hear from them and their perspective. And we talked about a few different sites that they're going to look at and do some analysis for us. So we're going to meet with them again in a couple of weeks so that we can get a little bit more information before we really bring anything back to the council.
Why did we, why did we not go with Port City to begin with? They were, they were the ones that initially did the architectural design. Why? Why did the council at the time not go with Port City?
I think the concern was that Port City was engaged, but not through a competitive bidding and vetting process.
Meaning?
Meaning that we, we knew that they had done work on other public safety buildings in the state and the two chief And the two chiefs got together and they said, let's, let's see what kind of information they can give us. And that's how that relationship started with Port City. But the council wanted to go through a, a, an open, public bidding process to pick an architectural firm to help us in this. And that's why we are where we're at today.
So are there minutes somewhere where the council picked an architectural firm?
Yes.
Could you provide me with those minutes?
Okay, let's see.
Oh, can I just, one more thing, not, not pertaining to that, but I did want to just commend the events and marketing in the rec department for the great efforts for the kayak and canoe race on the weekend. I attended, it was great. They did a great job. I thought it went really smoothly and hopefully they'll do it again next year.
Didn't you win one of them?
Yeah.
I was reading down to it, it was Courtney Boma.
Yeah, congratulations, Councilor Boma.
Well, thank you.
We get your picture and stuff and get that on the city website and all that.
So Neil's, Neil's, I could see Neil on the bridge and I'm like, I bet you he's live. Here I go by with my pickup and tag, that was me, that was the tractor.
That was him on the bridge?
That was me on the bridge. And then at the end of it, I'm looking and I said, that's my house.
Yeah.
You know, it was like, but that was pretty cool. I think they'll do that next year. That, they did a really good job.
Oh, I would highly recommend it.
Cool.
I have nothing.
Don't you have anything? Mark, you got anything you'd like to add here? I guess I'll just, oh, I guess I'll talk about the upcoming meeting. I'll mention those now, the upcoming dates and meetings, where we're at, where we're at on the, on the city manager recruitment. Okay, just, uh, as it said in the city manager report, we've had 11 applicants submitted by MMA and consulting and we're in the process of getting down to a first round of interviews. The council is gonna have a meeting on Thursday, the 26th. So, and at that point, we will schedule the first round of interviews and we will be doing the first round of interviews for Tuesday, June 1st and Tuesday, June 8th at 4:00 PM. People out there can know where we're at in the, in the process. I think that's all I can say about that.
Mayor, would you repeat the special meeting to discuss?
May 26th?
It, it, oh, I thought it was the 25th.
No, let me verify the 26th on her.
Thursday, Thursday.
Thursday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, I thought we said we could only do Tuesdays when we.
Yeah, it is Tuesday.
25th.
It's the 25th.
The 6th.
Is it 25th? Hold on. Excuse, May 25th? I'm looking at the email.
Oh, sorry, May 25th, okay.
May 25th.
Which is a Tuesday night.
Tuesday night at 6:00 PM for the purpose of scheduling a first round of interviews, which will be Tuesday, June 1st at 4:00 PM and Tuesday, June 8th at 4:00 PM. So Dennis is gonna schedule those meetings, get the word out for that. And other than that, I have nothing to add at this point. So, motion to go into executive session, well, 12A, Real Estate and Economic Development.
Second.
Second is discussion. Air?
Aye.
Boma?
Aye.
Gawn?
Aye.
Morrell?
No.
Terryo?
Aye.
Willie?
Aye.
Aye. Six, favor, one opposed. Executive Session, Real Estate and Economic Development. And you've got a bunch of stuff for us to sign. And microphones off, please.